Wait, no man, so you go.
Go for it.
Regular monthly meeting, Anderson County Board of Education will come to work. Dale, will you lead us to the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The four board members, not new, but the four board members have been duly sworn in by Mr. Cole.
Five.
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 That's right.
But not on the list, but.
You burn all the... Now I'm gonna turn it over to the director.
One of the things we do in September is elect our chairman and vice chair, so I will open the floor up for nominations.
Dr. Parrott, I'd like to nominate Dr. Burrow as chair and Joe Williams as vice chair.
Second.
Made second, do we have any other nominations?
I move nomination cease.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Dr. Burrow, and congratulations.
I appreciate the confidence.
Oh, will you stay there?
You stay there for right now, are you on move now?
It don't matter, what do you want?
Well, we've always had the vice chair set right here.
Well, I was just gonna say because of COVID, you may wanna let us clean before you move.
Do it for the next meeting, yeah.
Yeah. Now, Don, that was not what I was saying, I'm just trying to be careful.
I appreciate the confidence from the board, and I must say this has been the best board that I've ever worked with.
You all are amazing.
In 25 years, everything's gone so well. Recognition of guests. Being none, persons to be heard. Being none, approval of the agenda.
So move second.
Moving second, approval of the agenda, discussion. Being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries. Approval of the consent agenda.
Do we need to do that as one thing, or do we have to do those policies all at once?
You do them all at once.
So maybe we accept the consent agenda. What was the consent agenda?
Executive approval.
Did you vote on that?
No, we need to vote on it.
Vote on the...
We didn't get a second either.
The executive appro...
Is said consent agenda.
Should be approved by consent.
Yes.
Consent agenda.
Unless somebody wants to take something off of it.
Okay, you don't have to vote on it.
You don't have, you don't have to have a motion.
Okay.
Okay.
And Dr. Burrow, I apologize, I've got the, I've got an older one up, I know Ms. Crawford updated this today, but this computer sometimes keeps the older version. Executive approval, there was the approval to carry over head start funds and the one where we approved to pay subs $50 for last Friday, that was the two executive approvals we need to have voted on.
We went over those Monday night.
Yes.
I guess we need to approve those.
Yes.
Do I hear a motion?
So move.
Second.
Moving second, we approve the executive approval of the carryover head start fund and the $500...
$50.
$50 raise for the, so, discussion. Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries. Comments from the chair? The final district meeting has been canceled, it's gonna be carried out, but it's gonna be virtual. You have to register with TSBA to be able to join it. You have the...
Pam has sent that, have you sent that out, Pam, to our board?
Yes, and when they register at tsba.net, then they'll give you the web museum information.
And those are some things that we have to do for our boardmanship, so we need to make sure that you go on and do that, so we're...
Are we gonna come here and do it?
No, you can just do it from your, do it from your home.
And we will get credit for that, right?
Yes.
I think I may have deleted that, Pam, I'm sorry, I'll find it.
Stay present for late talking.
You can use Tim 2.0.
Oh, there you go.
That's really the only comment from the chair. Comments from student board members. Kate?
Is that the report that we...
Yes.
Alright, and I shall report. This month, the students at CHS have taken many important strides towards their futures. Over 50% of our seniors have already registered for Tennessee promise. All seniors are currently meeting with their counselors this week and next to ensure that they're going to graduate on time and to discuss their post-graduation plans. U.S. has distributed the Tennessee Next Guides to all 10th graders and 12th graders. This guide outlines the important steps students need to take to be successful after high school. ACT tutoring and homework help started in mid-August. The attendance at these sessions has been good despite COVID-19. U.S. has also organized two full-length ACT practice tests to prepare seniors for the September 20 second A.C.T. Many clubs, such as the National Honor Society, GTSA, LARQ, and the PEP Club, have resumed their weekly meetings and activities.
Thank you.
Thank you. Preston?
I'm just gonna start out by letting everybody know that I was here on time.
That's what you get for coming in with granddaddy.
So, Anderson County High School, tomorrow is 9/11, so we're wearing red, white, and blue to commemorate 9/11, and taps will be played on the intercom by Shandy Dice and Morgan Maggi. Next week is Spirit Week, which is also Homecoming Week, so every day is a new theme for students and staff to dress up, so it's always a fun week. And student government president and vice president were elected this week. Bailey Alley is a, is a president of student government and Courtney Neer is a vice president. And football team, as many of you know, Anderson County beat Clinton the first week of the season by a score 41 to 6, so we got off to a good start, and we're now 2 and 1. And volleyball team is now nationally ranked, and they were undefeated up until a few games ago.
Till Saturday.
Till Saturday, so they've had...
Georgia state champion beat us. They beat us.
They've had a really successful season. Girls soccer has started out 5 and 0, and cross country has had victories for both boys and girls at the Songbird Trail in Norris. And actually, right now, at Anderson County High School, in the auditorium, there's a senior parent meeting that is informing seniors and their parents about college and like financial aid and upcoming opportunities for, to take the ACT, and just informing them about how to help them in their future journeys. And as Kate mentioned, there's a ACT for seniors September 22, September 22, which is, they're also offering a practice ACT for sophomores on that day. And last but not least, gonna mention that there are 24 AP Scholars at Anderson County, which is, that means you get, you pass three or more AP exams, which are exams for college credit, so many students, there are many other students that are passing these exams and getting credit for college classes, which is big for their futures.
Thank you both for the reports. Director's report.
Thank you, Dr. Burrow, and again, I want to thank this board for doing a tremendous job through this pandemic and all the things we've done, I thank you for your support. One thing I want to read tonight is, you know, we do a lot with Utrust, and that's where we get some funds to be, to be able to do special things for our staff, and tonight we are honoring our bus drivers, and if it's okay, I'm gonna read this resolution. Anderson County Board of Education Board Resolution Honoring and Recognizing School Bus Drivers. Whereas school bus drivers have an opportunity to ensure that a student's school day begins and ends in a positive manner by the way they greet each student in the morning and bid them farewell in the afternoon. Whereas the school board, school bus drivers have a tremendous responsibility getting students safely to and from school every day, and whereas bus drivers are extremely valuable employees, without them, many students will not be able to get to school, and our school system will not run properly and smoothly. And whereas bus drivers must be ready to handle any emergency situations that might occur, and whereas the superintendent and the school board greatly appreciate the commitment, competency, and dedication of our school bus drivers and wish to honor them for their service to our school system, therefore it be resolved that the Anderson County Board of Education hereby establishes September the 17th, 2020, as Bus Driver Appreciation Day in Anderson County, and be it further resolved that the Board of Education encourage students, parents, and the staff to join us in expressing appreciation to the bus drivers for all they do, wholehearted, adopted wholeheartedly and unanimously by the elected school board of Anderson County, Tennessee, at its meeting on the 10th day of September 2020.
And we approve. Moving second, we approve the resolution honoring the bus drivers, discussion.
I'd say one of our bus drivers, David Landreth, is home and doing great.
Yes.
He's had a long battle.
They've done a great job, I think.
They've done, you know, we talked about the last time, and Andy may remember it, but we, we talked about, we don't remember the last time, now the bus drive, buses have tore up and they broke down, but, but we tried to get with Joe and figure out a time that a bus just didn't run, and it doesn't happen in Anderson County, and in some counties there's 40 and 50 buses that don't run every day, and our buses run every day now. One will break down, but they'll send another bus, even if we have a bus breakdown on the side of the road, so I can't say enough about our contractors and our bus drivers. We got the opportunity to ride a bus the first three days, and listen, they know every student, they know their parents, they know, they're, they're, they're that social worker that we have that, that greets that student and says, "How's it doing, and do you having a problems?" They talk about buying food for them, they buy clothes for them, shoes, I mean, that's our unsung heroes in Anderson County.
I read last night that someone was saying, you know, make sure if your child is under third grade, that there's an adult there to meet them.
Yep.
And somebody else chimed in from another county and said, "They don't care, they drop them off regardless what age they are," and I thought, "I'm proud of our bus drivers for being that conscientious."
That's what I was gonna echo that same thing, because I know that has happened at Claxton, and they brought, I think they brought three children back this week.
Yep, yeah, they, they doing excellent job, so we're, we're very blessed in Anderson County with our bus contractors, and they're, they're bought into our community, they're not, they, they do it because it's a business, but it, it's more of a commitment to the health of Anderson County schools than does anything.
Yep.
So what are they gonna do to honor them at the school?
The, the, at the schools, they make signs for them, they, they go out and, and there was a group that did cheers for them and things like that, they buy food for them and all of those things.
Will there be announcements to students about this day?
Yes.
I feel like this day is one of those that's under recognized by the student body, but it's an important thing.
Pam, we'll make sure that happens, she'll put it in her notes. Go ahead and vote on if you want to. Vote on.
Oh.
There's a motion made in second, we just need to...
Approve the resolution.
Resolution. Oh, on the bus drivers?
Yes.
I thought we already had it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries.
The, the only other thing I have, Dr. Burrow, is I just wanna thank our staff and our custodians and our teachers, they, they've done an amazing job through this, they work tirelessly, our nurses, I can't speak enough about what our nurses are doing to help everybody, and it's, it's a team effort, and sometimes it's like, if I can take this proof, it's like being a dad and, and you're really proud of your kids, and that's what I'm proud of Anderson County schools, and I, and I'm just, I can't say enough about when Ryan, the, the positive things we have on our social media and things like that, and the people that really just step up, and, you know, things, things don't go wrong in Anderson County, we have problems, but we fix them, and, and a lot of things that I don't even know about till they're done, if there's, air conditioner goes down or something, we just got a good group, so, again, I think even through a COVID, we've, you got one of the best school systems in the state, so, that's all I have.
I agree, and one thing I think we, the board ought to do, I think we need to write Kelly, or whoever's responsible for these things.
Yep, yep.
A thank you note.
Kelly Myers.
With the maintenance of... Without that, we'd all be having to wear a mask constantly up here, and it really makes a difference, to being able to communicate.
Yep, he had about four or five other school districts come and look at him and, and copy errors, so.
Maybe we start selling.
Yep.
Also, we don't realize how hard our food service department has worked.
Yes, they do at that.
All through this.
And the custodians, you came...
Yep. One thing I want to tell you about the custodians is, you know, we, one of the things we've always done, since I've been directors, have a summer meal, we have a kind of a celebration, well, we didn't get to do it this year, and me and Pam's been working on it, we're working on cards to send out, and we'll be sending all the custodians and maintenance staff a $25 gift card, and let them go out and eat on their own, we didn't, maybe this next spring we'll get to do it, but, like I say, they do an excellent job.
They can have a drive-by, can't they?
Yes, they can have a drive-by. That's all I have, Dr. Burrow.
Okay, what about the SRO grant?
Well, I, I'm sorry about that, yeah, we, we were approved, the SRO grant, of $440,000 again this year, Joe Fogarty wrote that and got it in, and that helps us have, as you know, now we have a, not only do we have a nurse in every school, when we get this fully funded, we'll have an SRO in every school, and those are two things that, that really and truly help our school run a lot smoother. The other thing is, we got our LEAPs grant, that's for after-school programs in our elementary and middle school, and that is $525,000 a year for the next three years, and we're looking at, we were talking about some things today that would help us out, is to try to maybe have some band, you know, we don't have band in elementary school right now, a lot of kids, when they get into middle school, it, it may not be popular to be in band, or it may be that the band has really took a hit, that the, not that the numbers are down too much, but we don't have a lot of new people coming in, so we've talked about maybe, hey, if we can do a feeder program like that, this allows us to do that, so.
As a day student myself, I think that's a wonderful idea.
Good deal.
The other thing that we discussed Monday night was the free meals for the, all the schools.
Yes, yes, as of Monday...
I think we need to announce that.
As, as of Monday, every student in Anderson County eats free, breakfast and lunch.
For how long?
Till December the 31st, we hope, and we would hope that the USDA would, Margaret has really been working to try to get those to make it that way for everybody, and, you know, the USDA has some kind of messed up rules, I think, sometimes, that it'd be easy to just kind of pay for some of them, but if we pay for a few, then they take everything else away from them, we have to pay for everything, but we have had 10 of our schools, is that what it was, Margaret, or?
We, for CEP.
Yeah, we have what, 12?
We have 12 CEPs.
We have 12 schools that were eating free before this, and they eat free every day, but now that the USDA has done this, our two high schools, Norris Middle School and Norris Elementary, they will eat free until December, so I'd like to see the USDA make it free lunch for every student in America.
Yeah, are the parents aware of it?
Yes, we've been sending out emails, we've been sending out stuff on the, on our social media, and they sent out some things for the principals to actually send some other things out to the parents tonight.
Why is that, I mean, why are they getting free? Is it coming from the government, or?
Margaret thinks there's more, that the USDA put all this money in through COVID for the summer feeding, and they didn't use it all, reimburse, and so that's how they, they've got some extra money that they wanted to use.
Yeah, that's good.
Yes, it's very good.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I, I sneaking idea that we need to get somebody on staff to report these things to, they're not getting into the press.
Yep, well, we, we got them.
Yeah, we hit the press.
Yep. Yeah, we had an article this morning on W...
WVR.
WVR.
We just, we discuss these things on Monday night, but when we get to the board meeting, we, we sort of pass over them, and, and some of that stuff can get missed.
It was on Facebook.
What?
It was on Facebook. Everybody does it now.
We're in the newspapers, too.
Committee reports. Budget committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, budget committee met Monday night, got a few appropriations. First one, 1A is appropriate funds for Chromebook repairs and replacements, that's $57,878. 2B is to appropriate funds to reimburse Employee Childcare Fund, that's $35,510. 1C is appropriate funds for, this is replacing a piece of equipment for student records, it's $4,000. 1D is appropriate funds for contracted needs for COVID supplies, that's $50,000. 1E is to appropriate funds for the Clinton High School ROTC parade equipment, $3,273.07. 1F is to appropriate the LEAPs grant, which is our after-school program, which we just mentioned, the first of three years, $525,363. 1G is to appropriate funds for the Clinton High School gear-up supplies, that's our undergraduate programs awareness, $30,763.26. 1H is to appropriate grants and rebate balances from last year, $1,299.75. All of these have been approved by the budget committee and forwarded to the full board for approval, and I so move.
Second.
Moving second, we approve the appropriations 1A through 1H, roll call vote.
Mr. Vale?
Aye.
Mr. Cantrell?
Yes.
Mr. Gillan Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Langenberg?
Aye.
And Mr. McCamey?
Aye.
Ms. Portwood?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
And Dr. Burrow? Motion carries.
Then we got a couple of transfers, too. 2A, transfer funds for internet connectivity, $13,111.97. 2B is funds for safety supplies, $30,000. 2C is funds for gear-up supplies, $9,958. 2D is head start, transfer funds for teachers and social workers, $7,720. 2E is transfer funds for medical and personnel and contracted services for early head start, that's $8,659.13, and I'm gonna go ahead and include the addendum, which is 2F is for school snacks for our preschool companion, that's $1,000. Those have all been before the budget committee and recommended to the board for approval, and I so move.
Second.
Moving second, and approval of transfers 2A through 2F.
Yeah, yes.
Discussion.
What are the internet connectivity, is that the little gadgets, gadgets that you put on your computer if you don't have good access to internet, like if you live somewhere that doesn't have it, is that what that is?
No, I think this...
Internet connectivity is for the actual internet in our building.
Yeah, this is internet in our building, we're, we're upgrading the internet in our building, is what that's for.
I read where you could have little gadgets, I talked to you earlier about that?
Yes, yes.
You said you were ordering some?
Yes.
Okay, what are those?
Well, those are called, those are called hotspots.
Yes.
And, and, yes, and we're working with the, they're working with Sprint on that to see if we get some of those. The, the problem is, a lot of places that the people don't have the internet, even the hotspots don't work, so we're trying to be real conscientious of who we're using those at. But right now, all of our kids that are online, they have their, they have internet access in their homes.
That's good.
Real good for that.
That's good.
Yeah, this is a payment for the education networks of America.
Motion made and carried, motion made and seconded, that we approve transfers 2A through 2F, discussion. No other discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries.
We also approve the teacher pay, but it's under action items, you wanna take care of that now, or at the end, under action items, substitute teacher pay?
I'll take care of it now.
Either way.
Okay, well, we approved the, a motion to pay substitute teachers who have already worked 10 days or more a month, an extra $50 a day for working on Fridays or the day before a holiday, so, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, that we approve $50 increase on the days prior to holidays. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries.
That's all from budget.
Building ground.
Mr. Chairman, we have one item on our agenda, we met with Michael Foster, the Rocky Top City Manager, and we voted to pass the LED lighting project for the football field at Lake City Middle School, students and community, and we will fund one half of the cost of $150,000, so that's $75,000, and I so move.
Second.
Moving second, we approve the funding of the project, Lake City Middle School Football Field, football, baseball, and softball. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries.
And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Action items.
Dr. Burrow, we just need to, because this was outside of the budget, I need to get the new staff just approved, these were people that we either hired as new people, or we hired, we had to increase days, or we had to move them from one to the other one, and we need this approved, it being outside the budget, it will be part of the thing we can use our CARES Act money for, so we just need to approve all of these hires. I hope you approve them, 'cause they're already all working.
So move.
Second.
Moving second, we approve the new hires for COVID-19, discussion.
I have a question.
Yes.
Since it's the cause of the COVID-19, these are temporary hires.
Yes, yes.
And so, when we go back full-time, these people...
When, when we, when we get through with COVID at the end of this year, a lot of these people, usually like teachers, we have to, when we hire an interim position, new position, we have to hire them for the whole contract, so we'll, we'll have these for at least this year, and then, yes, at the end of this year, we won't, I, I think the one thing that you will find out, you'll have probably 17 principals that'll be coming back and saying, "Hey, I wanna have that full-time nurse in our school," and I, and I think it's a good idea, we'll just have to figure out how to get it in the budget, but, but yes, all of these are outside the budget, the 20 days and the extra hours, all that stuff, yes.
They would be no different than an involuntary transfer, so they don't have any expectation for next year for it to carry over unless he and us decide to do it.
Yes.
But we talked about a couple of those that I pointed out by name the other day that have been with the county before now, that just got moved into another position, does that mean they're gonna lose their position?
No, 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 they don't, they go back into that other position, but what, what it means is, is we get funding, these, well, the reason they're on here, we get funding for those because it's part of COVID, we moved them out of the regular budget, put them in here, we probably still put another person because of the way these people had their certifications, they were better at doing online. They were better at doing online than maybe another teacher, so we put a new teacher into that spot in the school.
Should we amend the motion to say that this budget money will come from CARES Act?
It's fine, I'll make.
And you had mentioned that this was just for a semester, but now it sounds like you're saying it's for the whole year. Are we approving the funding for the whole year?
You're, these, these are the ones we've had, and like I said, is we hope that it's over in a semester. But no, most of these teachers will be for the whole year, yes.
Okay, so we're approving the funding for that?
Yes.
For the entire year?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to be clear.
Where is it coming out of the budget?
It's coming out of the CARES Act.
Okay.
Do I need to amend my motion?
I think Joe's right that it should be amended.
Okay, I will amend my motion to accept these new staff hires, knowing that this, that will be paid out of the CARES Act.
Who's second the motion?
I do, I'll second.
You accept that. Motion made and seconded that we obtain these new hires and pay them out of the CARES Act. Other discussion. Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries.
That's all we have, Dr. Burrow.
We did approve the substitute teacher pay and. Any meetings to be set? Anything else?
Next Tuesday night, everybody connect with the Paul District Meeting.
Yep, that's next Tuesday night.
We have to do.
What does the?
Paul District Meeting next Tuesday.
I can't hear you.
Do we have any idea what COVID's gonna do to our budget next year?
No, we are, we are down about a hundred and twenty-three students right now, as of today.
Have you seen Oak Ridge's figures?
No, no. I think that we're hoping that the legislators will do harmless this year. The state has says there's sixty thousand less students enrolled in public schools this year. A lot of them have went to homeschool, and I think that, I'm hoping that once this COVID is over, we'll get a lot of those back. And we've already started getting some of them back. But as you know, our sales tax, our sales tax is holding good. Our sales tax is up about, let me get to the report. You can look on there and see. It's, I don't want to tell you the wrong numbers. Our sales tax in last year in August was eight hundred and nineteen thousand, this year it's nine hundred and sixty-one thousand. So, it's up over a hundred thousand dollars from last year. And if we, if we hold to that, I think we'll be in good shape. As you know, we cut quite a bit out of our budget this year, but due to COVID, especially some things that we're having to buy this year is we're having to buy laptops for our teachers that are teaching online, because the Chromebooks, all they're doing, it just won't run it. And we want to make sure our teachers have the supplies they need to do that. The COVID supplies that we've done with our hand cleaner and mask and all of those stuff, yeah, these things just keep adding up. I think we've spent about twenty-five thousand on these, and so all of that stuff keeps adding up. But in our, we have set aside a million dollars in our undesigned, designated a million dollars going to for COVID, so we know that we can pull money out of there and come to you if we need it. But right now, you know, we're still, we met with our principals this morning, we're still not allowing any field trips this first semester. We're not doing any, not moving, doing any professional development outside of our schools this first semester. So, a lot of those things, we're trying to make sure that we can still have school. And I think we're doing a good job. I think our staff's done a tremendous job on making sure people are safe. And, you know, one thing y'all did last month was with our critical infrastructure. And we are making sure that we allow staff, if they, if they're in that, they've, they've in that close contact, and we get with them. If they want to work and they feel safe with work, we let them, we let them work. But if they feel that they're in danger with their health or some concern, so they can go home and take that eighty hours. So, I think we've really been, it's worked good so far. But there's nothing, you know, I'm like Mr. McCamey, I wouldn't want to put anything on our budget this year that's recurring because we don't know what's going on, and we have a, we have a very strong fund balance, better than we've ever had, but I want to make sure we keep that, because if, who knows? You know, I've heard rumors, after election, it gets real good, and after election, it gets bad, so I, who knows?
It depends on who wins.
Yep, it may depend on who wins, yep, yep.
I think that election.
Fix housing market and everything.
Y'all are booming right now.
Oh, yeah.